Hello, good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I call this special town meeting to order. I'm Joanne Berry, the moderator, town moderator. Welcome and thank you all for attending tonight. Thanks to the town and school staff and ACTON TV for taking care of the arrangements and setup for this meeting. Before we get on to business, I do want to draw your attention. The other slide for ACTN Exchange is the startup newspaper online that is just changed their website, updated their website to this look. So if you haven't checked it out, please do. Since we no longer have the beacon, this is people's effort to make it work. So this meeting was called by citizen petition. And if you are unfamiliar, just so that you do know, once the signatures are filed, the meeting must be scheduled within 45 days. That would not allow this special meeting to be conducted on the same date as the annual town meeting, which sometimes happens. So how many folks here are first-time attendees? A few, okay. So hopefully, I'll do my best to explain things as we go along and it will seem straightforward and clear. So we will be using pro and con mics. The pro, I think the one in the back is pro also, I can't read that far. So pro on this side, con on that side. So if you have a question, you can go to any mic. So when I recognize you, please state your name and street before making your comment or asking your question. Keep in mind that you are officially speaking to me, the moderator, though of course your comments and questions are for the benefit of all who are here. This is designed to keep the temperature down and keep the meeting flowing smoothly or moderated. If you have questions, I will recognize the person most appropriate to answer. You will have two minutes to speak, not including the response to your question. Timers are facing, there should be, there's a timer down there and there should be timers in other places as well. The article for tonight's meeting is limited and the discussion must be confined to that topic. The moderator will accept a motion to cut off debate or move the previous question once there has been sufficient debate to inform the town meeting members of the pros and cons of the motion. You may not make a statement and then move the question, you may only move the question. So if you're in line to move the question, that's all you get to do. Moving the previous question requires a second, is non-debatable, and requires two-thirds majority to pass. In the absence of a motion to move the previous question, following a robust discussion, the moderator may determine, usually through a show of hands, that most of the voters have decided how to vote and the vote will be taken at that time. And you do have, when we get to that part, we'll do the clicker run-through. So first, I would call on Mr. Snyder Grant to introduce the folks on this side of the table.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am Jim Snyder Grant, and to my right are the select board members Fran Arsennault, Dean Charter, Alyssa Nickel, and David Martin. And behind me, we have Town Manager John Mangiardi, and Town Council Mina Macarius, and Town Clerk Eva Skorodick.
Thank you. And on this side, Ms. Anderson.
Hello, we are the Finance Committee. My name is Kristy Anderson. We have Jason Cole, Steve Noon, Christine Russell, Greg Jarbo, Scott Sullivan, Roland Borden, and hiding in the back here is Dave Wellinghoff.
Thank you. So, we have one article and I will read the motion to set it in play. Ms. Moosbrucker moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Friedrichs, to the article, please. Do you have the words of the article? Should we read the motion? Or does everybody have it, they got it in the mail? Okay, thanks. All right, so hello. Why a special town meeting, you may ask? Well, we've been asking for basic information about major upcoming zoning change proposals for over a year. Town officials could have spent part of the MBTA, the state MBTA zoning grant money on impact analysis like other towns. With no other option, we are now here talking about impact analysis. It seems good for the town. Officials have presented a list of benefits of rezoning, but what about the downsides? We need to understand all of the potential impacts. Now we're going to talk about zoning impact analysis. First, what is zoning? Zoning determines what can be built on land. Inexpensive impact studies can help us understand proposed zoning changes before they are made. What is likely to happen? What is the worst case? Will we get more or less? Housing affordability, budget impact, traffic, walkability, carbon footprint. Zoning can help ensure that building serves community needs and is inclusive. Impact analysis will help us determine the benefits and who will get more or less of something. We are in a climate disaster. Why would we approve allowing more new building if we do not know the impact on affordability, carbon footprint? Will the zoning help or hurt affordability? The state just released a study today that said less than 20% of renters can't afford the market rate apartments that are being proposed. So, according to a study that was released this week. If we learned anything about, from the budget issues that we're confronting with the override is that we benefit by having better data before decisions are made so we can anticipate the need and plan better. Knowing more about the impact will help us decide if we want to make a zoning change. Will the hoped-for grants offset the costs? It is wise to understand how much it will cost before voting. On May 6th or 7th, I guess it's going to be 7th now, we vote on zoning proposals that together could be the most significant land use changes in the history of the town. These changes would allow significant new building in South Acton. When we vote, would you rather have the numbers? Know the impact on vulnerable people. How will we know whether we are right to worry? Inexpensive impact analysis will help us understand the impact of allowing more building in terms of the impact on schools, water and sewage capacity, stormwater infrastructure, affordability, open space, taxes, and traffic. It's important to understand the answers before we roll the dice. Remember, to vote yes is significant. It's been the policy that when a non-binding petition passes, that it goes to the select board agenda and the select board is under pressure to act according to the will of the people. So there is value to a vote tonight. Maybe they won't do everything we're calling for, maybe not every impact study, but if you want more information, if you like making informed decisions, this is a valuable exercise. So let's be informed. Let's get answers specific to Acton. Please vote yes to impact studies. Thank you. Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
Thank you. The select board discussed the petition and unanimously agreed to recommend against the article. The reasons expressed by the select board include these points. First, the language of the petition requires the impact study to be of, quote, "the maximum impact." Studying the range of likely outcomes is useful, but that's not the language of the petition which would put time and money into the most unlikely outcome. Impact studies is not defined. The planning department does study the possible impact of zoning articles. And what else would this require and at what cost? Third, petitioning for a standalone special town meeting like this one, just to debate a non-binding petition, to influence the vote on articles at the next regular town meeting is a waste of the town's money and time, and we'd like to discourage that kind of action. In particular, if the petition had been filed earlier, this could have been a citizen article at the regular town meeting in May. If it had been filed later, we could have filed a special town meeting, we could have had a special town meeting on the second night of annual town meeting and thus not have had to have this special one-issue meeting on a night of its own. And it was clear from conversations with the person that collected most of the signatures that the timing was deliberately chosen to require the extra expense of a special town meeting on its own night. The purpose of the petition is to help gather additional no votes for the MBTA zoning article at the regular town meeting on May 7th. That is, the language is expressed as a message to town leaders, but it's really just an extended advertisement against a particular zoning article done at town expense. And this is a zoning article that will bring, help us bring a mix of more compact, environmentally efficient housing options, near public transportation. In other words, the kind of housing we need to support more economic diversity in Acton and to allow more people that work in Acton to actually live in Acton. The select board encourages you to vote no.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you to members of town meeting. I suspect that those of us in attendance tonight are likely some of the most engaged citizens in Acton local government. And funnily enough, it seems like parts of my speech have been leaked to both of the previous speakers. If I may, Madam Moderator, I would also like to suggest that this is going to be one of the more nuanced Finance Committee responses to an article because we would like to address both the letter and more importantly, the spirit of the citizen's petition. The letter of this article is actually very difficult to endorse. It is too subjective to recommend something as amorphous, as a detailed study. That is too broad and too undefined to recommend with no parameters regard rails. The Finance Committee does not recommend hiring more town staff to do this assessment, nor do we recommend hiring outside consultants for every zoning change, addressing scads of discrete metrics to generate document scores that pages long with enough caveats to make sure that there is no legal recourse in case the estimate is wildly off the mark. Similarly, maximum impact, as was said, does not generate actionable information that could help the citizenry understand the impact of a zoning change. Maximum impact is a result of mathematical calculation. It would be fairly easy for this town staff to generate the data. Take the parcels as they are today, apply the new buyright maximum, who cares how useless a number that is, let's just spit out the number and say, there, met the requirement, let's call it a day. The spirit of the article, however, is entirely commendable. When asked to provide a template for the new type of information being sought, a good first draft was sent to us for review. And I, for one, was very pleased to see that there was not just a maximum impact column, but also a column for probable five-year post-change. And while the word probable is doing a lot of work in that statement, it shows that the spirit of the article is provide information, not just hold up a worst-case scenario to carry the day through fear. Furthermore, when some of the basic draft inputs were too specific to be of repeatable value, it was agreed immediately to remove those and focus on keeping this template as generic as possible, something that will generate apples-to-apples comparisons across multiple years and multiple town meetings. And while there will undoubtedly be disagreements about what basic inputs should be considered, it is the Finance Committee's position that reasonable efforts to provide more actionable, thoughtful, and insightful information to the taxpayer is always the right course of action. We believe there is a moderate middle here, one that will not cost the taxpayers, nor will overly burden our town staff and volunteers. Just putting up a map of the parcels potentially impacted by a zoning change is not enough information. Assuming that the instant a parcel is rezoned, it will immediately convert to the absolute maximum density is also not credible. The chasm between those two extremes is too large at this time, and we recommend coming up with a waypoint. We recommend generating a template. It should contain basic information that will be available for any zoning change. It should have the maximum impact, okay, that's easy, but it must also have a reasonable estimated range. That reasonable range should then be compared to a very small number of perennial limitations, such as available water district capacity, sewer capacity if it's an existing sewer district, federal per capita first responder guidelines, and lastly, available space to existing school buildings. These perennial limitations are not meant to be instantly disqualifying, but it is incumbent upon town leaders to identify near-term ramifications of making a large change. The select board has said in the past that it will respect town meeting's approval of citizen's petitions and pursue them in good faith. The petitioners here are also willing to hone their ask to be of repeatable benefit. I know of at least two members of Finance Committee who are willing to help be arbiters of who is asking for too much and who is giving too little by way of information, if our opinion would be of service, Madam Moderator. It is an attainable goal in the near term to settle on the basic inputs, agree on a method of generating the reasonable estimated range, and to define the steps and the functions that identify where unintended consequences could become very real. Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article as we believe a more educated electorate makes better decisions. Furthermore, we ask that if this is adopted, the joint effort to define this template begin as soon as practicable. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a correction. The select board vote was four to one to not recommend, not unanimous. I will now call on Mr. Van Meter.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Bob Van Meter. I'm speaking on behalf of Acton Housing for All. Acton Housing for All opposes the advisory article calling for detailed impact studies of major zoning articles because this article appears to be an effort to slow down and possibly block the adoption of the MBTA community zoning proposal and other zoning proposals at Springtown Meeting. The proposals that will be considered at Springtown Meeting in a few weeks are the result of two years of community meetings, public surveys, and conversations. During that two-year process, the town has studied and carefully examined the potential development that may occur if we adopt these articles. The proposals have been shared in a variety of forums and public comments have been solicited and have been considered. The adoption of this article is simply a vote for the status quo of zoning and housing policies that have been in force here in Acton and elsewhere in Massachusetts for 50 years or more. We have a 50-year impact study of the current zoning laws, and that study shows us that the status quo has produced very limited housing choices, consequent housing shortages, high rents, and home prices. This is a status quo where 9,000 of Acton's nearly 12,000 acres are zoned for single-family development as of right and only 400 acres are zoned for multifamily housing. These zoning policies have been part of creating a racially segregated region. Today, the Boston Globe reported that the median home price in greater Boston had reached 900,000 and that this was in large measure because of the housing shortage that the region has. For decades, the oil industry told us that we needed more studies on the impact of carbon on the environment before we acted to address climate change and reduce greenhouse gases. Now protectors of the current status quo of single-family homes and sprawl are asking for more studies before we act to create a more inclusive future for our community. Creating more multifamily housing near transit is not only about addressing our need for more housing, but it also is a vital part of addressing climate solutions. Current zoning practices have produced sprawl and have contributed greatly to climate change. We know that reducing greenhouse gas emissions will require more multifamily housing and more housing near transit. We ask members of the town meeting to reject this article. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open it up to the town meeting members. Approach a microphone. Microphone one, go ahead. The red thing should be glowing. Press the button, Ray. There you go.
Sorry. Madeline Cruz, Station Way, President of nonprofit organization Housing and Climate Justice for Acton, ACJA. A group of Acton apartment dwellers who care deeply about the well-being and rights of tenants' rights to live in a healthy environment. We believe that decent and affordable housing is a human right. HCJA urges a yes vote for this warrant item, calling for impact studies, particularly ones that will document how might a particular zoning bylaw affect housing and environmental justice. While we encourage the town to put forward zoning that is inclusive and affordable to new tenants, zoning proposals also have a responsibility to serve the needs of existing tenants. For example, the new zoning that is due to be proposed at May town meeting will impact hundreds of existing tenants, including 70 families at Dover Heights on Central Street. If passed in May, owners will be able to build by right more housing. Will this change the economics so that existing tenants would be at risk? Regionally, speculators are buying land and evicting tenants so that they can build more. And impact studies can tell us what to impact and evaluate if a zoning plan is likely to be helpful, harmful, or neutral to existing tenants. Tenants need impact studies to understand the cost of housing to tenants in these districts before and after, to know what to expect about the amount and quality of our open space after the new zoning goes into effect, to know if the zoning would create better lives for existing residents. We are concerned about the water and walkability, but displacement risk and affordability are the most important. Massachusetts is one of the least affordable housing markets, which means Acton tenants are more vulnerable to free-market speculations and tenant displacement due to gentification. An impact study will let us know whether all should be concerned about this happening. For these reasons and zoning, you support safe and--
Your time has expired.
Oops, sorry. Well, I support this article and I hope everybody says yes. Housing is a human right and we all deserve to live without fear of losing our place. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two. Whoops, turn the mic on. There you go.
Janet Adachi, Simon Hapgood Lane. I would like to endorse the remarks of the chairman of the select board. I also would like to endorse the remarks of Bob Van Meter in opposition to this article for the reasons that Mr. Snyder Grant said. This article and the special town meeting that it necessitated are a waste of taxpayer money and town staff time that was avoidable. The article is also a waste of voter time because it, as strongly as the proponents felt about the need for detailed impact studies and a special town meeting to discuss that, they are asking for a non-binding resolution. Well, why a non-binding resolution? Apparently, it's because it sets the bar very low for the proponents. They just have to come up with an idea and then don't have to worry about the detailed supporting information that would be necessary if they were looking for a binding vote. And as I speak, some voters may be sitting here thinking, what's the harm of supporting this resolution? It's non-binding. If we vote to support it, it won't obligate anyone to do anything. But apparently, some of the proponents are expecting that the town will pick this up as a select board goal and the burden and the cost will fall on the town to do something that may or may not be necessary. I don't think that it's necessary. So don't be deceived. Approval of the article will motivate, among other things, the principal proponent of the article to file more time-wasting articles seeking non-binding resolutions, the cost and burden of which will fall on town staff and ultimately on the taxpayers. Finally, as Mr. Van Meter said, this article is principally aiming at generating opposition to some of the zoning proposals that will be on the Acton Town Meeting warrant next month. The town committee, of which I am chairman, supports that zoning proposal about the MBTA communities, and I'll have more to say at that meeting. In the meantime, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four. You have to hit the button to turn on the mic.
Okay. I agree with the comments that have made by--
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, sorry. I'm Ann Anderson, Minuteman Road. I agree with the con comments already made by the select board and by Bob Van Meter. This is vague, major zoning proposal, detailed impact studies, et cetera. Maximum impact, what's the maximum impact of not doing it, things like that. Second thing is, we elect our town officials and judge our town staff on their ability to make good decisions. Our officials and staff already carefully study major zoning proposals. They consider alternatives. They offer public reviews, which they have done, I have attended these, such as for the MBTA Communities Act proposed zoning. We have the opportunity at town meeting to turn down any major zoning proposal if we feel they have not made a good decision, done enough study, or provided insufficient public review. This introduces unnecessary bureaucracy that may make it difficult to meet external deadlines such as limited time availability of land that's for sale for conservation or other purposes. What if we need to do a major rezoning to deal with PFAS, the carcinogens in our public water supply? What if we need to do some major rezoning to deal with the effects of climate change? Remember that a resolution like this can work against you if it's a zoning proposal you like and it could work, just as it could work for you if it's a zoning proposal that you're against.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Hello, Kristy Anderson, 460 Main Street. I'm happy to see that so far the discussion is not about the zoning article that will be discussed at the town meeting in May. This really should be about whether we are discussing increasing studies, making them possibly just more visible to town members about the impact of major zoning changes. This is something the Finance Committee started to look into, what are the underlying costs, when then suddenly the override came up and we had to step back from it. But I think this actually is a very important issue. If you step away from the fact that we are here for a special town meeting and decide we are going to use this time usefully, and you step away from the idea that maybe this is against the MBTA zoning, there is a useful discussion to be held here that would, if nothing else, make it more clear for those of us who are voters to know when we're making good decisions going forward with zoning. I had one more point. I'm sorry, I have forgotten my other point. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Hi, I'm Jim Carey from 11 Goswood Road. When I look at this proposal, I see an opportunity to delay, to not embrace change, to not upgrade and consider how this town needs to evolve. I don't see a sensible policy about why we should or shouldn't do something. It's my view. I actually have read our long-term plan from the 2020 plan, so I think it's timed out pretty badly at this point, but it actually espouses that we should be zoning for exactly the kinds of situation that the zoning rules are asking for now. So when I look at zoning, I think of it like planting a tree, right? The best time to change zoning is 10 years before you need it. The second-best time is exactly when you need it. So I'm against this proposal.
Thank you. Microphone three.
Mike Gowing, 93 Harris Street. I guess I would say that this is not completely crafted the way it needs to be, but its intent is to provide us with more information. The zoning that came down through the MBTA zoning was thrust on every community that has any near continuity to an MBTA service line. It isn't necessarily the right zoning for our town, and in fact, it's being mandated from many people who don't live in our town and don't care about the character of our town or anything else. So I think it's not a bad thing to have, particularly when you have a situation where we want to go to more electrification, we want to move away from natural gas, we want to move away from oil heat. If we put in 1,000 units that are all on the grid in South Acton, what is that going to do to the grid? It wasn't in the slides, you know, we talk about sewer capacity, which it would finally exhaust our sewer capacity in South Acton, but there was no mention of what it would do to our electricity. Our grid is not ready for this kind of development, but that being it is may. You can agree or not agree with what you want for zoning and what you want for housing. We've had 40B for 40 years, I think. If it wasn't for 40B, there would be no low-income housing built, zero. So I understand the need for mandating stuff, but I also understand the need for knowing what the impact is of these items that we're talking about. You know, this is one of the oldest sections of the town. So, anyway, I would vote yes for this article.
Thank you. Microphone four.
Hello, I'm David Martin. I live on High Street. I have a handful of quick points. I have a handful of quick points. The maximum impact standard proposed by this article would not be inexpensive to calculate as claimed. Estimating buildable lot area would require professional studies to determine wetlands avoidance, size of septic fields, market-based unit size requirements, et cetera. The maximum impact standard proposed by this article also isn't reality. Zoned areas would never be built out to the max, so it's not meaningful as a standard. It's a scare tactic. Any implication that zoning allows an end run around septic, stormwater, water, wetlands, or other regulation is not correct. Each project proposed in town must obtain all applicable permitting, traffic studies, wetlands reviewed by the Conservation Commission, permission to hook up from the water district, et cetera. Zoning does not require the town or water district to supply a project with sewer or water service. Zoning is a means to promote economic centers that keep our community livable and vibrant. Also, people need housing. Our own children can't afford to live in the town that they grew up in. Some hundreds of people signed the text of this article to call a special town meeting. The text means what it says and says what it means. The proponents can't change the meaning of the vote after the fact. FinCom recommends looking into a reasonable cost way to compare the probable impact of zoning proposals. Personally, I think this would be an interesting approach, but it's not this proposal. Please vote no on this article, which requests extremely expensive studies, which would do nothing to protect town resources beyond regulation already in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two.
James Coleman, Nash Road. I would suggest that despite the desires of those behind this petition, it will not answer any of the questions they want answered. A maximum impact is entirely theoretical. Even if it were graded over different levels of development, it's still only theoretical. Who's to say whether it's going to be elderly housing, family housing, single-family housing, whatever it happens to be that gets put in where the zoning is? There's an almost infinite number of possibilities that could occur, and to study any of them, especially the maximum impact, does not really answer any of the questions because it may never happen. When and if a particular proposal is made, that's when the studies occur, and that's when we'll find out its impact on the school system, on water supply, and land use, et cetera, et cetera. And that's the time to figure out whether or not that proposal is compatible with what Acton wants. And I also would add that we need to add more housing. People can argue against the MBTA mandate. If they want to argue against that, let them vote no at the town meeting where the zoning is being proposed. This doesn't get them anywhere. It just is a delaying tactic, as other people have said. Thank you. I'm against this article.
Thank you. Microphone three.
Danny Factor 11, Davis Road. While you see I'm at the pro microphone, it was not an easy decision for me because I think there's a lot of good faith on both sides. It was good to hear, even though the select board opposes this, that they do say that looking at a whole range of impacts is a good idea. If there's one thing that I've kind of gleaned from listening is that there is going to be impact. You can talk about the maximum impact or the probable impact. The idea of worst-case is not a scary thing to me because I know that in my life-- I mean, how many times in your life have you said, "Well, what's the worst-case scenario?" That's something that's good to know. That doesn't mean that that's everything you need to know. And there'd be nothing wrong with the select board, you know, considering, you know, all the different ranges of impacts. Affordable housing is a good thing. I have concerns about whether proposed zoning, as it is, would create affordable housing that is truly affordable to most people. I think it would be a fair thing to do an impact study, and particularly in regard to existing tenants, to see not necessarily maximum impacts. I mean, you can look at that, but you can also look at possible or probable impacts of tenant displacement as well. And the same go for the environmental matters. I think we have a good planning board, but it's not an insult to them to say that sometimes, to avoid conflict of interest--
Your time has expired.
--we need to be more objective. So for those reasons, I think impact studies are good, and I encourage a vote of yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four.
Hi, Franny Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. I'm not speaking for any group that I'm involved with in town, but myself. I think this is a delaying tactic, and I think it's trying to affect opinion on zoning articles that are best spoken about at the next meeting. I also want to draw people's attention to those numbers that Bob Van Meter noted about the numbers of single-family zoned housing compared to multifamily. If we're going to study the effects of zoning and development, we should study all of our zoning and not just this particular zoning article. And we should be looking at the effects of the long-term zoning decisions that were made, including the effect on affordability and racism. I believe that the Planning Department has done an amazing job, amazing, over the last two years, researching and being responsive to public opinion and lessons learned in other places and lessons learned in Acton, and are well-equipped to know the outcome of any housing that happens to be built with all studies that have to be done each time any development goes in. It's not like we're saying, "Okay, go." So I just want to encourage you to not get waylaid by this. It's very irritating, and, I mean, I feel irritated by this sort of pulling aside, this detour that we're taking as a town right this minute with this meeting. And I look forward to talking about the real issues at the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Please vote no.
Michael Vialis, Willow Street. I'd like to point out, if I understood correctly from an informational meeting that people could have attended from the Planning Board, I personally would like to see the zoning built out to its fullest because more housing helps keep prices down and makes more affordable housing. But what came out at the informational meeting is that the zoning fits the state's requirements for saying this is acceptable for the, like the MBTA overlay. But there are a lot of issues which will make a lot of those properties not developable as would be hoped because of perking issues, wetlands. To get-- At the informational meeting, it was clear that to get that information, you have to go to all those lots and evaluate all those lots, which is a Herculean task. So to get the information that people are seeking here is really unreasonable and would be quite expensive to accomplish. So I ask you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Jane Moosebrucke, Brewster Lane. The problem I perceive with all three zoning proposals is that they ask for only 10% affordable housing. This will not solve the housing crisis. We may have a large build-out and not solve our problem at all. The main crisis is at the low end of income. The Department of Housing and Community Development revised their guidelines to say that a community could require more than 10% of the units in a project be affordable, but not more than 20%, provided that the community demonstrates that a reasonable variety of multifamily housing types can be feasibly developed at the higher percentage. My experience as a Conservation Commissioner for many years was that if you ask for more affordable housing, the developers will do it. The good developers will come out and do it, and those are the ones that are going to follow your town guidelines, too. And in case you think all developers will follow the town guidelines, I live in a condominium unit that was built too close to a wetland, so I and many of my neighbors have wet basements. I would like to see us amend all of the zoning bylaws at the town meeting to ask for 30% affordable housing. If enough communities push back at the MBTA zoning bylaw, we will see change, and communities are pushing back at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four.
I'm Roland Willett, Prospect Street. I find this whole process where we get about 200 people in a room to vote, where in two or so weeks, we're going to get 2,000 or more to vote, to be highly undemocratic, and really upsets me. I find this unfair. I think as a matter of process, we should just vote this down because the process is wrong. I understand that we did get the two-weeks notice, but this is-- the meeting is taking place during school vacation week. We have a lot of people out of town. This is just not good.
Thank you. Microphone three. Whoops, just turn on the button. There you go.
I called the previous question.
It's been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor of cutting off debate at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, so now we will go to voting. So there should be some instructions about turning on the clickers.
Let's do a standing by first. No, please. A lot of people that don't want--
We'll stick with the clickers. We fired them up, got them out. This is their trial run, you know, getting warmed up. Don't turn it on quite yet. Now press the blue sync button. I assume this is the message we should see on the screen, the one? Okay, yes. If anyone's screen, little screen doesn't look like this, please raise your hand. Okay, there's one back by microphone four, and one by microphone three. Is everyone set now? So if you are voting yes, press A. If you are voting no, press E. And if you wish to abstain, press C. Yes, please vote now. Sorry. Sometimes I forget I have to say things out loud. So A for yes, E for no. Has everyone had the opportunity to vote? Anyone stuck? The motion fails. Please let's not applaud. It just fails. I would now entertain a motion to close the meeting. All who are in favor of dissolving the meeting?
Aye.
Any who are opposed? Thank you, and we'll continue this discussion later.